Okay. Okay. Okay, calling the meeting to order July 10th, 2018 at 3:31. Do we have, oh, roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Metoyer?
Here.
Ms. Flohr?
Here.
Mr. Davenport?
Here.
Ms. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey's absent.
Dr. Navarro?
Here.
Okay. What is... No cards? Okay, so, good. Since there's no cards, we're gonna go into closed session. I apologize for the late start. We had a lot of things in closed session and so, again, I apologize for keeping you waiting. So, calling the meeting back to order July 10th, 2018. We're gonna start with a readout. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the dismissal of classified employee number 201-803-HR effective July 11th, 2018. The roll call vote was six ayes, zero noes, and one absent. Okay, so then we will go on to the opening ceremonies. A moment of reflection and pledge allegiance to the flag led by Martha Flohr.
Please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, the first thing is the adoption of agenda. Okay. Move adoption of the agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay. There's been an amendment. The staff pulled 14C1. Move with the amendment to approve. And I'm sorry, Mr. Davenport, did you second that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
So, adoption of agenda moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mr. Davenport. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's. Number nine, adoption of minutes from June 22nd, 2018.
So move.
Second.
I moved approval of the minutes of the June 22nd.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I just, no, that was my, my bad. I'm sorry. No, I see ya. Okay. Oh, you wanna say something? Okay. Adoption of minutes moved by Mrs. Franco, seconded by Ms. Metoyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's. Now, we're on to number 10, reports. The review of site-controlled access at district sites. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, President Snell. This is to give you a report on some work that the district has been doing over the last couple of months with regard to reviewing all of our sites for access control. Starting on April the 9th and finishing on May the 11th, we visited 34 of the district sites, all 34 of the district sites that have people at them, students, staff, and sites that have simply staff. We reviewed all of those sites. We had an architect and a security consultant walk those with us. We walked them with the site administrator from each one of the sites and we walked the entire perimeter of the campus to evaluate them. And we did so under the guidelines of an organization called SEPTED. And SEPTED is the organization that provides the standards for security protocols for all facilities. And the three main guiding principles of SEPTED are natural surveillance, access control, and territorial reinforcement. Very quickly, natural surveillance is about maximizing awareness. It's really looking at the site from the perspective of, are we, when we're on our site, able to be aware of what's going on in our surroundings, around our sites? So, the team looked at it from that perspective. The team also looked at it from the perspective of access control, which is to maximize the passive control of entry. So, say, for example, an entrance, a gate, would be an active place where someone could come in, go out, and you have to make sure the gate is closed. A fence in and of itself is very passive. So, what we did was, we walked, we looked at all of them and we said, okay, what do we have that's both passive? What do we have that's active? What could we be doing in the future to maximize the amount of this that's passive so that it's, doesn't require checking a gate, custodial runs to make sure that gates are locked, those types of things? Are there things we could do that would enhance that? And then the third one, territorial reinforcement, was to maximize the awareness of the public to our right to control what happens on our own sites. So that they understand, you know, the public space has ended, you're now on a school space. So they clearly understand when they've made those transitions. So it was looking at what kinds of things could we do in the future to enhance that? In doing so, there were some primary observations that we made. Through that evaluation and SEPTED principles, we looked at the long-term view of how can we reduce the number of entries at all possible? And the recommendation of SEPTED is to get as close as possible to a single point of entry so that you know where everybody is coming from. The next one is to look at the height of the fencing. And, you know, some fencing that's very low doesn't provide a whole lot of passive control of access. A very high fence, like we've done on some of our newest projects, provides a very high level of passive control of entry. The next one, then, is looking at our active management plans. What types of practices do we have in place? So we talked to the site administrators about things like their plan for the custodian at the start of the day to go and check to make sure that the gates are closed. That then goes to, if there's a gate, it has to be checked. Do we want to keep a gate? Do we want to remove the gate so that we don't have to have that step? And it becomes more passive. And then that whole aspect of the active management plan, you know, what's in place, working with Mr. Lee Sung, as you heard in your last meeting, to continue to look at our school safety plans and our active management plans for our sites and what things we could do to continue to enhance that, both in the training and the planning and in physical changes that would then also change the training and planning. Making sense? And then, the other is, with the limits of entries that we would have, they would still need some level of active management. And so we started to look at what types of things, like, for example, cameras, could be used? What would it take? How would that be utilized to provide for that, to further enhance, say, for example, the custodial runs and make it an extra set of eyes, so to speak, to make sure that we have clear, active plans to review our access areas. So with that, we started looking at both short-term plans and long-term plans. And we are currently looking at options to, as you know, we have three projects right now that are under construction. We're at elementary schools where we are reconfiguring the entry to the office and the fencing. This has been a long-term program that you've been pursuing for quite a number of years, for about five years now. And those are continuing to go on. Well, you know, still looking at, well, what else is there? What's the next project in that regard to continue to finish securing our perimeters? The other one is closing some openings and gates that we have, gates that aren't used but aren't needed by us. And the question is, well, then, let's get rid of the gate because checking it is an effort that has to happen. If it's not there, then it's not gonna be a gate to check. So should we do that? The other one is raising fence heights in places where we might have a low fence and we say, in order to get a more secure perimeter, more passive control, should we raise the fence heights? So those are all short-term plans that we're looking at, to see how quickly we might be able to make those types of changes. Then also with regard to the long-term plans, as I mentioned a moment ago, both those training and active management plans, we continue to work. Mr. Lee Sung has been part of the committee, looking at what are those, what kinds of additional things can we do to enhance those plans toward the long term? The idea of ultimately reconfiguring, there are still, we believe, some schools where we can enhance security by reconfiguring the front office areas, but those will be longer-term plans. And then things such as adding cameras so that we can change behavior where folks can understand that if a gate is left unlocked, we can find out how it got left unlocked by looking at, later, looking at the security camera and saying, oh, well, now we see how it got unlocked. Let's go talk to the folks about why that's not a good idea and how we want to manage that. So those are all the actions we've been doing in these last couple of months and we're excited about what it's gonna do to further enhance the security of our campuses for our students and our staff.
Thank you. Good. That's what we want you to be doing. I wanted to, I believe I know the answer to this, but, so, when you're out on your tours of all the schools and sites, you talk to the principals and they were part of deciding...
Yes. All of that, I'm sorry, I went through it very quickly. As we went to all 34 of those sites, we walked the entire perimeter of that site with the site administrator. It was 99% of the time, it was the principal who walked it with us. A couple of our sites, for example, Harper and Lindbergh, don't have a principal, they have a site administrator, we walked with them. But always with the leadership of that site, we walked it, talked with them, talked about things like, you know, where do people come from? Where does the bus drop off? Is this gate that's here, is it used? What's it used for? Is it used for after-school? Is it used for students coming in the morning? All of those types of things. So it was this collaborative conversation that we had with the site leadership about how their site functions on a daily basis and what the perimeter access control looks like and what could be done to enhance it.
Good. Mrs. Black?
I would just like for, you know, the publics, because it frustrates me for the last few years, is that when we do anything, we still have to go through the Department of State Architect. But do we have any other, you know, like federal guidelines or something that we have to adhere to when we start, you know, closing in our schools? Because they were all built to be the hubs of neighborhoods, open, you know, to everyone and whatnot. Are we feeling any of those pressures, you know, from the feds and the state and locally, you know, cities and...
Yeah, the other major impact, other than the building code, which is the state architect for us, enforces the building code, is the environmental impact process. And so, each one of these, it depends on each project as to whether or not we could say that the project is categorically exempt from an environmental analysis, but of course, someone, even if we said it was exempt, could challenge that and say, no, we think that your interpretation of the law with regard to environmental impact is flawed, et cetera. Some of these, if they're very extensive, might require an environmental impact report. Other ones could be an exemption process. It really depends site by site.
Mrs. Flohr?
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done?
Yes. Oh, Mrs. Flohr.
Thank you, and I truly appreciate this update. I have three questions. One is, do you have an approximate cost of how much this would, the total, the total cost, long-term, to do it right?
To do it right.
Would be about how much?
It's many, many millions of dollars, in the tens of millions of dollars to take and put all of our campuses at the level of a single point of entry and passive levels of control throughout the entire district would be in the tens of millions of dollars.
Okay, great, thank you. Most of us have always been walking on campuses and we've been on the playgrounds and we noticed that, at least I've noticed in my walks, that sometimes there's a gate that's there with a community member. I mean, all of a sudden, there's access to a backyard onto our playground. How does those, are the, did we grant permission? Did the city grant, I mean, how did these homeowners have opportunity to have a lovely gate onto a back, onto a, extend their backyard onto our playground?
Yeah. There is, there, to me, it would seem obvious, the district does not have a permitting process to allow people to have a gate onto district property. Many of these go back decades. The district had no fence. The key way often that this happened was that the district had no fence whatsoever. The neighbors on their residential property had a fence and they put up their own fence. And so, since they put up a fence at all, them putting a gate into their own fence made perfect sense to them. And so, there are some of those cases where the district has no fence. The neighbor's fence is the only separation between their house, their yard, and our school. In other cases, the district has put up fences along those and, over time, sometimes folks have come and removed our fence, where their fence is, because in their minds, hey, I always had this ability decades before, why is the district taking it away from me? So there are some situations like that. And probably there are some folks who have, over the years, just said, you know, it seems like a good idea, I think I'll do it. Better to ask for forgiveness than permission. We would expect that some of them probably came about that way.
So, in this process of establishing our perimeters and securing our campuses, what's the process in terms of notifying the neighbors? And not only the neighbors, but the communities themselves? Because in some instances, our sites are the hub of the community, as Mrs. Black said. So you want to make sure that they're attractive. At the same time, there are some, there are, you know, the perimeters of the sites, playgrounds and things like that may necessarily be okay with chain link, but entrances and you want those to be attractive. What's the process by which we're gonna notify, A, the community, or the neighbors that were putting a fence up and there are gonna be some consequences if you cut into the fence and try and secure entrance again? And what's, how's that process gonna work?
There is no, there is no legal requirement for us because it's our property. And so, putting a, just as the neighbor can put a fence at the back of their backyard and say, this is my property, I don't want people to walk onto my property, they put a fence up. We don't have any legal obligation to put a fence on our side of any property line to our next-door neighbor. That said, your other question was related to the sort of social relationship between us and our community and our neighbors. And we think the best thing to do would be for us to develop all of these, to have a conversation with you as a board about how you would like to have that conversation with regard to each one of the types of conditions. You know, say, for example, somebody has a gate onto our site, how would you like us to handle those types of communications with those types of neighbors? Versus, say, for example, another completely different, is we have a shared park with the city, with our constituent city, how do we want to handle that? Each one of those, I would suspect, you will probably give us direction is a little bit different.
Okay. So, so the question is, is how, you have a short-term and a long-term, and I guess the question is, how you want to get some of this done post-haste?
Well, our objective has been to get you the information so that, that as much could be done as we, the collective district, are prepared to do as quickly as we can. So that's really, we've now gotten this work together and you're at the place where, if we want to move quickly, we can move quickly. If we want to add steps that would take a little bit longer, we can add those steps. It's really for us to decide now what our process will be.
So, President Snell, I would recommend that we, that you convene a meeting as soon as possible so that we can take a look at the individual sites, the recommendations, and really come up with a set of priorities in terms of, I don't think, I think, as you said in your remarks, A, securing the perimeter of sites, removing gates and fences and opens where there weren't any, you know, that there, the principals have said, we don't need this gate, securing all of those, those temporary, raising the fences, the existing fences from four to six feet. I don't think those are the issues, but I do think that there are some other issues in terms of the frontage of our schools. And so I would suggest that if we can schedule that as soon as possible so that we don't delay the moving forward. And if you can provide us a list of what can be done right away, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, that's a good idea. Ms. Metoyer?
Thank you. Originally, it was to, what notice are we going to give to the community? And to make sure that if, if any access has changed to the schools, it can be the access just getting to school or going home from school. If it changes at all, that, we need to make sure that we notice the community. And also to be cognizant of the fact that if we are putting, when we put up a fence, if it's going into a park, if it's dividing a park with the city property, that, we've pretty much taken care of a lot of those. But there are some where we want to make sure that the community doesn't lose access to the park and we don't lose access, the community doesn't use access. Because, especially in Costa Mesa, the parks that are right next to the schools, part of it blends in. That's the point, to enjoy it. And we've successfully done this. Adams is an excellent example, where the community still had access during the park hours that have always been community access, but not during school hours. And they don't look like they're in a prison. So that's our intent, is to make sure that we don't stop, at least the board's thought is, my thought, is that we still have a pleasant environment and work together with the communities and the cities rather than, I don't, sometimes I feel by the phrases that we're saying, this is our property, we can do what we want, no matter what. And I just want to make sure that we make it really clear that we want to make sure that the community is notified. If we have to make a change, we make tough changes. Parents take decisions that, I'm sorry, we're not discussing when your bedtime is. But for something like this, no, we have to do this for the safety of our kids, but we want to give you plenty of notice that, you know, before school starts, you might want to walk with your child in a different route because you can't go through the back.
The point of all of, all of this analysis that was done was, this is a very, very big and very, very complex issue to get, to get anyone's mind around. And so, our objective was to try to assemble all of that information for you. As you know, we have school sites where the district's school property and our playyards extends out into what is essentially a park, which then puts us no longer in a passive control aspect of protecting students, it's an active control. So then we work, as we have been, talking with Mr. Lee Sung about what does that look like? In order to continue to provide our duty to provide for security for our students when they're out on the playfield, that's our playfield, but it's completely open to the public because that's the agreement we have with the community, with the city. That then is an active plan. So there's many ways for us to approach this. The idea of this was to give you all of the information together so that you could make those decisions about how you want to provide that for our students and our staff.
Our schools were all built in friendlier times with less concern. Our concern for safety was walking to school and walking home. It's way different now. It's sad, but it's way different now. Thank you.
Mrs. Black?
Yeah, just real, I was gonna ask Mr. Trader or Dr. Navarro, maybe, you know, have we heard any more information on both the feds and the states' grant money? Because I know that they were all talking, I know in May, they were talking that, you know, that the legislature was gonna start awarding for school safety and, I haven't seen anything.
There isn't anything yet. Folks are still talking, but there is no plans.
So, we're gonna have to, but, and then the other, the other thing, and I don't want to belabor it, but our main focus, and we hear our community and we hear our staff and, is for our students and staff to feel safe at school as best we can. We're, you know, we don't walk on water, so we can't say 100% guaranteed, but I think, you know, I appreciate all the hard work, because this has been, we've been doing it since Sandy Hook, actually.
That's right.
And, you know, and trying, you know, to make sure that we do it. And so I totally appreciate all the effort. And we've gotten a lot of feedback from the community, too, helping with great ideas. And some pushback, but...
And the police department, well, a former officer also helped.
Yes, our security consultant is a former local police department official.
Mrs. Flohr?
I forgot to ask one question, and that's about parking lots? Because I even know that this parking lot over here is being utilized by the people at the Residence Inn and this shopping center on the weekends. Like, there are many times that I have come here to the ATM and, and there's 30 or 40 cars. And I think, oh, is there a meeting today?
I know.
On Saturday, Saturday, there's, what about park, is parking lots part of this process? Because we know that there are, there are schools...
We looked at all of our, we looked at our schools. We have all different types of situations. We have some school parking lots where there's an existing gate that can be closed. We have schools where there is no gate. So the idea, again, was to just assess everything because there's so much of it to allow you to be able to look at it all at once and to start to make decisions about which way we ought to go with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to informational items, which sometimes we have, and we have an item on here and sometimes it's just blank and we try to give you the latest stuff going on. But this is math middle school course pathway recommendations. Dr. Navarro?
Yes, I'm just following up on a message that was sent out to the community and to teachers and to parents about what the board had asked staff to do. The board had requested that we come back, look at the added input that we received, and consider the pace of which we were moving and what we were doing. And after all that time, staff did come back with a recommendation. And what was sent out to the community is that we will continue with the current enhanced seven, eight program and the math one in eighth grade for the coming year. But I don't want it to be lost that the steering committee, as I understand it, and maybe Mr. Drake can correct my concern, is really, how do you fit two years' worth of math into one? And so, they don't want our students who are being accelerated to have any deficits. So this year will be a time to study that, to see how do you more effectively deliver the two years of math in seven, eight in one year? And what accommodations need to be made for, to make sure that we're not losing large percentages of students in that process? So that'll be taking, taking place over the next year, but for right now, it's status quo as we go move forward.
I think, I think it's prudent to do it that way as well because we're not, we want to see how the materials work and make sure the teachers have some further input after they have been with the materials for a period of time. So I think it's good to slow this down. Mrs. Flohr?
Yes, thank you, I agree. I do have a couple of questions and maybe if John can answer them for me. One, so my understanding is the recommendation that is that the sixth grade, the students who took the sixth grade test will go, that pass the, at the 80 percentile or better will go into the seventh, eighth enhanced math. Is that correct?
That's correct. As we've done in the past, the criteria for the recommendation for placement will be the same, based off of that assessment that sixth graders took.
So, so, just some basic, because I'm a numbers person and you know that. So how many sixth graders were there across the district?
This year?
Uh huh.
The early numbers are about 160 that were in the 80th percentile.
So it's about 160 students at the 80th percentile? What does that compare to as, from last year?
Last year, I don't have the actual test numbers. I know there were about 240 kids in that pathway.
Okay, so it'll be about 160 this year? And I know that in the past, and while I agree with this recommendation, there was a question at the last board meeting from a community member in terms of the impact that this recommendation is in terms of the kids not being able to accelerate and the loss. And you gave us at the, two meetings ago, you gave us the loss that there was a significant drop-off of the number of students that were in the enhanced... drop-off of the number of students that were in the enhanced math. Could you just go over, just, just briefly tell us that? Because it was a significant, it was like, I think you mentioned 40% of the students that had accelerated from seventh and eighth and had taken seventh and, seventh, eighth enhanced math at the seventh grade, then went to math one in eighth grade, and then continued to accelerate. There continued to be a drop-off. Could you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so what that was, is that we have one cohort of students who have, who started in that seven, eight acceleration four years ago, and we've been able to track just those students over the four years. And from the beginning of a number of students who enrolled in that seven, eight, to those that maintained themselves in the enhanced pathway, there was a decrease of about 40% of students in that cohort. I do want to be clear and fair and say that there are some kids who, as freshmen, decide that they want to move into that enhanced pathway and do that then. But for those, those kids who started that acceleration, cohort of kids who started that acceleration four years ago in middle school, there was a decrease of about 40% of those kids maintaining in that enhanced pathway.
And I believe you said there were like 324 students in seventh and eighth grade, and then it dropped significantly down from 40% of those.
Correct.
Okay, and that was, and they were now in 11th grade, correct?
That's correct.
And they were in doing the AP thing? Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Matoye?
And the plan is to have the 160 students are across the district, so there will be an appropriate number of enhanced math classes per site?
Correct, yeah. So sites will get the data from the assessment and decide how many sections of that class that they will provide at their sites. I do want to be also just kind of clear, Dr. Navarro used the term "status quo." As far as pathways go, status quo, we will be using our new materials, both in sixth through eighth grade, and then obviously piloting materials in high school. So the pathways are staying the same, however, we are using new materials.
Materials are new.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to community input.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on consent calendar items or on non-consent, on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, per Board Policy 9323. Each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. And there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, or members of the community may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. Any board member or member of the public may request that a member, that a matter within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting by submission of Board Policy 90 through 22 Agenda Request Form to the superintendent. When addressing the board, it is helpful that if you state your name and address for the record.
Okay, we have several cards on math, and I will, again, increase the time from 20 minutes to more like 36 minutes to accommodate all the speakers at three minutes. But that will be, so there won't be any more cards. Okay? Okay, first Catherine Preston.
I'm Catherine Preston. I live at 1621 Mesa Drive, number 169 in Newport Beach. I have a fifth grader going into sixth grade, soon, and then soon to be going on to seventh. She is functioning at a second grade level math level, and I'm very concerned that you guys are just addressing the advanced pathways. And that we're not addressing those kids when we go into seventh grade, that they're gonna get learn, learning at only the seventh grade level, and that they're not gonna get what's at their level now. I want this addressed. It's not, it's something that I asked last time I was here, and it's, it's not being brought up, no, nobody's being, being any mention to, those kids that are really behind. It is very important that they get those foundations, that you don't just shove them into the seventh grade math, and that they, they have to try to struggle along. It's not gonna make any, any difference to them. So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do remember that you, you brought this up last time. Can we address that briefly? Yeah?
Yes. One of the things that we find when we review master schedules, what are the courses we find in many of our schools are the support classes. So our secondary campuses have developed a, an intervention program, and it really works out well for our students because they take their regular math class, and then they're given us a support class to help them succeed in those classes. And that is something that we have.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to sit down. We can't have a two-way, yeah?
And that is, that is something that's been developed over the last three years. So we do provide intervention in that manner. I think that Dr. Bauer might should give you a little more detail as how those courses work, if we don't mind taking a second.
Yes, I think, I think it's important.
But I wanted to also ask, because the new adoption is sixth grade through eighth grade, the sixth grade is in elementary, and that's also getting the new adoption. And I know that if, if a child has that much of a deficit, they're getting help on campus in elementary also. So Mr., Dr. Sir may want to pipe in. I don't want to lose the fact that she's gonna be a sixth grader, not a fifth grader. Thank you.
So as we look at those math tests for placement into upper level classes, we also look at those tests to see the kids that will be struggling with the basic foundational skills. And so what will happen is they'll have one class where they'll get their curriculum, and they'll get another class where they'll work on the foundational skills. Because you can't do algebra if you can't add, subtract, multiply, and divide. So they have one separate class to work on the foundational skills, another class where they, they work on the curriculum.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to that?
For elementary, I think she's more concerned.
Next year.
Sure, along with the Bridges in Mathematics Program coming, plethora of resources and materials that we haven't had access to in the past. So a huge piece of that really is the assessment components and knowing where our students are at, and being able to provide the appropriate intervention. That has been a very strong focus for us at the elementary level. You know, be, with the new materials just last year, we're getting better and better at it. But I believe every school has a very laser-like focus on utilizing all of the assessment components that are numerous within the Bridges in Mathematics Program. And with that assessment data, really being able to target where are the students at and how do we keep them moving forward? So as we get, go through the years, every year's going to get better, but there are some wonderful resources within the Bridges in Mathematics Program that make the ability to intervene with our students powerful.
And, thank you. Mr. Drake? And also in illustrative math, because that fifth grader ends Bridges in fifth grade, going into sixth grade, still in elementary, there's still those intervention resources that can help the teachers or support teachers that are pushed in with the regular classroom, correct?
Yes, so as we've talked about before, the usability of the illustrative math materials have teacher supports within them to support their differentiation. The other component that illustrative math has is a pre-test for each unit along the lines of what Dr. Sir is saying, which actually is a pre-test for prerequisite skills. Skills that the kids will need to make sure that they have in order to move forward. So teachers are able to take that information and within the instruction over the course of that unit, make sure that by, by that pre-test, they know where kids need a little extra support in beefing up some of those skills or concepts that they may be lacking in order to access those grade level standards.
Great, thank you. Thank you. So, Mrs. Preston, feel free, there you are. Feel free to make an appointment with any of these gentlemen or talk to your principal if you have more questions, okay?
These gentlemen are here this summer. The principals may not be inside.
They're here this summer, yeah. Ms. Karnick?
I'll be brief today. First, I just want to say thank you from the last meeting for, you know, listening to all of us and, oh, am I supposed to say my address? For listening to all of us and, and kind of slowing down the process and, you know, taking a look over this coming year at how the best implementation of the new curriculum can be achieved. And I, I just want to say that I hope that over the course of this year, that there will be regular opportunities where the public can be involved in, you know, some of the decision-making that's going on around both the, you know, what's happening in middle school, but also kind of what happens in the high school pathways. And I think, you know, even for, so, you know, you've got a small group of parents who've taken the time to stay informed and show up here and try and be involved. I mean, this is the first time I've ever come to anything at a school board, but, you know, we're a tiny percentage of the families and children who are impacted by all the decisions that are made here. And so I just would encourage everybody here to, the extent that you can, to reach out to your constituents, to the schools that you represent, and to whomever, you know, if you can talk to the administrators at the different schools, to just make sure that parents are staying informed and that there are actual opportunities. Because I know this, this format, of course, is, is not so much one where you guys can answer our questions, and of course, we all still have questions, that it would be really beneficial and I just think create more and better communication between all of the students and parents and the board and everybody else about what's happening next, you know, before it happens. Because I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, the sort of knee-jerk kind of experience that we've all had over the last month, you know, kind of finding out that something is happening or has happened without us kind of knowing what was going on, sort of dramatic. And I think we can probably all work together to create more communication and a better back and forth, a better dialogue between parents, students, administrators, the board, you know, when decisions like this are on the table. Anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we look forward to hearing more.
Okay.
Mr. Drake, do you have a parent session scheduled already coming summer?
Yes, we have one tentatively scheduled for August 22nd. We're firming that up, and then we've got two dates in September as well.
So we'll publicize that.
Publicize those.
Exactly. And the board is planning on having a study session or two, which is a much better way to talk back and forth, so.
And will equally be publicized when those are.
Yes. Ms. Courtney, Ms. Courtney?
Which one?
Sophie Courtney.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pass?
Sure, you can pass. Do you want to be called later, or you're just out?
I'm late to pass.
Okay, pass. Ms. Gurka? I'm, I'm sorry, John Gurka. I'm gonna keep this for a minute in case I have to.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving the public an opportunity to speak before you on this topic. I'm here with my lovely wife, Kristen, and we're very interested in this topic. We came to the last board meeting, we participate, or at least sat through the informational meeting at Newport Harbor High School. We've been following along through the emails. I've also emailed Dr. Navarro directly and Mr. Drake as well. By way of background, I have three boys. One is going to be going into his junior year at Newport Harbor High School. I have an incoming freshman at Newport Harbor High School. And I have a sixth grader who was just promoted to the seventh grade, and he'll be going to Ensign. My, my two boys, my two older boys, both went through the enhanced math program. So they had enhanced math one as eighth graders, enhanced math two, my older boy enhanced math two as a freshman. He just completed enhanced math three, and he will go take an AP Calculus curriculum now as a junior. My middle son is on that same track. And so it's really my youngest now that's impacted by these decisions and trying to figure out what path he will take and what is gonna happen for him going down the road. So I'd just say thank you for showing great restraint at the last meeting and not just doing this. I think board member Yelsey summed it up correctly. This shouldn't be a divisive issue where the board is taking a position and just moving forward without, without listening to the parents. And I'm glad you're doing that and you're having these meetings and informational sessions, because I think it's important to have consensus and build consensus, particularly when you are impacting a fairly significant segment. 160 students is a pretty big number. And I think we saw the bell curve, you know, there's like 20% of the kids are impacted by this accelerated math pathway. So thank you for that. And we will continue to participate, because it's important to us, obviously. There's one thing, though, that I would like maybe a clarification on. You've talked about status quo. We read the email, and we appreciate that. What seems confusing to many of us, my wife and I included, is when you say math one for eighth grade, do you mean enhanced math one or math one? It's not very clear. And I, it'd be helpful to get clarification on that, because the status quo would be, you would take this enhanced seventh, eighth in seventh grade, then you would go to enhanced math one in eighth grade, and then enhanced math two as a freshman. That way there, you would be on the right path, as my older boys were. And it's not clear what's happening here, and, because that would be status quo. And I want to make sure that we are all on the same page.
Yes, it's staying the same as has been in place for the last four years.
So the email that said math one yesterday that came out really meant enhanced math one?
Enhanced math one.
Okay, that's great.
But enhanced math one is actually ninth grade, it's called math one, and it's the ninth grade math course.
Correct.
Has there, has it been?
There's also an enhanced math one that has an additional unit of
Thank you very much, yeah.
Math two in it. So there's not a huge difference between math one and enhanced math one, but there's a little additional content in the enhanced pathway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gurka. Ms. Nguyen, or is it Wen? Because my doctor says Nguyen. She's a Nguyen, and it's spelled the same, so. I don't know why that is.
Smith and Smith or something.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. Hi.
My name is Vienn Wen.
It's Wen, okay. Why do some people say Nguyen?
Don't start her timing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just wondering.
It's very phonetic.
Oh.
And, yeah, we can talk about that. Maybe not in these three minutes.
Let's do that. Because I said, I called my doctor, Dr. Wen, and she said, "It's Nguyen." And I went, "Oh, okay, okay." Sorry.
Well, I beg to differ. So I live at 1245 Surf Line Way in Coronel Mar, and it's nice to see you all again. I'm very heartened to hear that you are slowing down the process. That's terrific. I, I just want to, you know, relay a little stories. For the last couple of weeks, my son Nicholas, who's gonna be entering ninth grade at CDM, has been trying out for the basketball team. And on the first day, we showed up at the gym. We immediately, we, right away noticed that there were some boys that were just, you know, a foot or so taller than the rest of them. And when they started to do their drills and their practice, it was also clear to everyone who was in the gym that some of the boys were not only taller, but they were also faster and stronger, and they just had better skills. And we were told that there would be two freshman teams, an A team and a B team. There would also be a combined freshman sophomore team. And for the kids who could play really well, there's a junior varsity team and there's a varsity team. Now, none of the boys were told that they were limited to the freshman teams just because they were entering ninth grade. And, you know, it's, it's not so different in the math world. I've been in the math world for much of my life, and, you know, some kids come into the seventh grade kind of shaky about fractions, other come in, you know, kind of ready to study pre-algebra. And there are some, and it's not like one every 10 years, we get quite a bit, a few of them every year who come in full-on ready to take on algebra. And yes, they do it rigorously, they do it deeply, and they can just learn faster. So it seems to me if we can offer three different basketball teams for ninth graders at CDM, surely we can offer at least two, maybe even three math classes. And I'm also very heartened to hear that there are gonna be study sessions. I hope very much that you include parents. You know, collaboration is really good. And, you know, critical thinking, this is what it's all about, right? We, parents, we have members who are mathematicians, scientists, educators, data analysts, and we're very eager to work with you to study this problem, apply critical thinking skills, and, you know, come up with decisions that are truly evidence-based and data-driven. So we're here to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Hikes?
Hi, I am a parent of three students in the district. I have one entering eighth grade, sixth grade, and fifth grade. I appreciate that we are taking a step back in the process. I had significant concerns about the proposed changes to the math pathway. I was not surprised that the district decided to put this decision off. We need to have more transparency and more parental input at an earlier stage in the process. I did some research of my own. The top 10 performing public school, school The top ten performing public school, school districts in the state all provide math acceleration in middle school. In fact, most of them start acceleration in sixth grade. Instead of fitting two years of math into seventh grade, as we do currently, these schools have sixth and seventh graders complete one and a half years of math. So over two years, their students complete three years of math. Why aren't these schools our benchmarks? Why aren't we starting acceleration in sixth grade? My daughter was an enhanced math seven this year. It was the only class that challenged, engaged, and excited her. On the contrary, she was not excited or engaged in English class and felt she learned very little. The district claims our one-size-fits-all English classes are working. How are we measuring the success of the English program? Are we, are the, all skill levels being challenged and engaged? Can we back it up with data and test scores? More generally, the district claims it has a GATE program to challenge gifted students. On our website, it states that our GATE program meets the needs of high ability and intellectually gifted students. It states that the district clusters GATE students in middle school, English, or social science classes. In my experience, I've yet to see evidence of an effective program at the elementary or middle school level. The middle school claims to cluster GATE students, but in reality, they are just evenly mixing classes with various skill levels. Clustering doesn't work when teachers aren't intentional about customizing the learning enough so that everyone is still getting what they need. There was no customization in my daughter's English or social science classes. Have we evaluated the effectiveness of our GATE program? Wouldn't the proposal to eliminate enhanced math further restrict the already limited resources and opportunities available for the same group of students? I speak from my experiences on one end of the spectrum. There are kids on every level of the spectrum. Kids are all different. Kids learn at different paces and in different ways. It is very difficult for a teacher to be effective in classes with mixed skill levels. It's easy to teach to the middle. Let's not fall into that trap. Our kids deserve better. We feel fortunate to live in a district that has the resources to meet the needs of all of its students. Let's start using our resources wisely and doing what is best for all students and help all of them to be excited and engaged about learning. I hope the board not only continues to support acceleration in math at Newport Mesa, but also challenges the district to continually and effectively address the needs of all of its students across all subjects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristi Mar, and thank you for listening to us last week. I really appreciate it, and I think it will really help our kids in the district in the long run, and it gave us all a chance to realize there are other kids also at the other end of the spectrum, and my heart really goes out to the mom now that's been here twice, talking. And I think that there needs to be more of a focus on all the kids at different levels being placed together. I think they all will learn at a pace which meets their needs. I think unfortunately, as Amy said, that the English classes have kids from all different levels, and they're not able to really accelerate at their own pace. So I just ask that you also think about that in other subjects, as well as I'm excited to hear that we'll be having input at a meeting in August, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, I appreciate the extra minutes. I can actually properly introduce myself, Peter Boyd, 505 Santa Ana Avenue. Uh, I also want to echo what Ms. Mar just said in reference to Mrs. Preston, I had some other comments, but really, what I just heard, the explanation was for students that are struggling with math is, your reward for struggling is, we're gonna give you another class of math. Well, that means you get no elective. And how does that incentivize and get a child to enjoy school when they don't have a choice? And all their colleagues and their peers have a choice. So I think when you have differentiated instruction, and, you know, if you want to call that low, middle, high, it, it doesn't matter, but when you're able to do that, now, everybody has the opportunity to incentivize themselves and say, hey, I really like art, or I like choir, or whatever it is. And if that's the thing that gets that student excited and coming to school every day, I, I don't see how anybody could be against something like that, because really, with this move towards the common core and college and career ready, that, that's the new mandate, isn't it? To understand that it's not a one-size-fits-all model, and that we should be differentiating learning. So I think that should happen in all of the academics, so. And it's ironic, because after Ms. Preston said that last week, I, I felt pretty dirty, because I was up here advocating for my high achieving student. And the following Sunday, I was at church and was talking about, you know, uh, I think it's Matt, you know, those who are last shall be first, and those who are first shall be last. And, and I'd like to say it was because I didn't have that extra minute, but I don't think it was. I think it was just because I was being selfish. And that's not okay. So, that's my public, uh, apology for only being focused on my own child's needs, but I think that's your duty as board members, is to be thinking about every student. And a model that doesn't take into account every student's wellbeing, that's a flawed model. So, I have some prepared comments, I will probably run out of time, but that's okay. I do want to thank you for listening to your constituents regarding the ill-conceived math changes for middle and high school. While your one-year stay is a positive first step, I'll respectfully remind you that the community still hasn't received a rationale as to why this proposed change was considered in the first place. And as you experienced at the last board meeting, this community highly values, uh, highly values differentiated learning opportunities for all students. Denying students with high aptus, with high aptitude the opportunity to accelerate their learning, or forcing students who struggle with math to give up their elective and have two periods, is unlikely to incentivize them. So I just want you to take that to heart. And I think the other thing is, I'm not a board member, I've been on numerous boards, it's a, it's a, I was gonna use a euphemism, it's not always a thankful task to be engaged in, but you have a community that's very passionate. It, if you survey people and they say they don't want it, I would be very, very attuned to that, and I would venture at great risk if you're gonna go against what the majority of your constituents are in support of. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Ashendorf.
Good evening, President Snell, Vice President Metoyer, Clerk Flor, Distinguished Trustees, and Superintendent Navarro. My name is Dennis Ashendorf. I reside in Area One, at 310, 3210 Montana, and I teach in the school district. First, I'd like to applaud the efforts of Mr. Lee Sung and Mr. Drake to improve the math experience in secondary by delaying math acceleration in a child's life, and then later, after receiving much community input, returning to our current flawed system. Both decisions were very wise. They deserve respect, because the community consensus had not been reached yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. May my words serve as part of the conversation to improve our math program. I'll address acceleration tonight, not pathways. First, we must minimize any need for acceleration. Students should have the ability to take two AP math courses in high school as an outcome of our conventional pathway. Our math three course needs a little tuning to support AP calculus, AB better, instead of just covering topics. Math two needs more on logarithms, so that AP stats could be taken concurrently with math three as an elective. Tina P. of CDM prepared notes on this several years ago. Our capable consultants can complete her outline, and that would give everybody two years of AP math. What's the acceleration for? Okay. Second, if a student does want to accelerate in ninth and tenth grade to take two years of calculus, an unwise but popular decision, math two A and math two B could be taken consecutive years without impacting athletic competitions. Students would complete six and a half courses, not six courses. Again, that completes three course, courses in two years. Third, and most importantly, we need to publicize the danger of the fixed mindset that permeates our society. When we place some students in special classes for acceleration, we're not just telling other students that they are stupid when they take skipped units, but the students who are accelerated don't work as hard and don't do as well as would be expected. They still work hard, but not as well as expected. Remember, they're officially smart. Schools and parents hurt students when we reward ability without work. Our own research suggests the truth of this. The results of Professor Dweck must be widely publicized. We should only reward effort. If students want to accelerate in seventh grade under a block schedule, they can complete math seven during the first semester and math eight during the second semester. All students take the same course. When I discuss this with people, they immediately see the benefits. Teachers support this, they want to teach it. I've outlined three steps to minimize the danger of acceleration. Reduce the need for it before high school, spread it out over two years in high school, and only allow acceleration by work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Geft, Geftany.
Gafny.
Gafny.
Gafny, is my name again that you have trouble with?
I know.
It's from Ireland.
Ga, is it G-A-F-F?
Gafny.
It's kind of the hammer.
I was the phone last time, too, which is funny. So, I race here from work, I don't have any really prepared remarks, but I did want to address something he just said, which was, I think what we parents are concerned about are the students who have already done the work in math seven in sixth grade, like they've already done that hard work and put in the effort, so that reasoning wouldn't really apply to them. And they've done it by putting in four hours of extra math every week, by choice, because they love math. But I came to talk about transparency. So I think there was unfortunately quite a bit of stress and panic among about five hundred parents that I was in connection with. And that was because we were told the very last week of school, when we thought we could finally relax, that this was gonna happen. So, um, and then, yesterday, I guess, or was it today? I don't even know what date it is. There was the post about, you know, math is gonna stay the same, which I am grateful for, but it seems like, um, the post also said that the committee would continue to research what would be best for students. And, I mean, that sounds really nice and good, but the whole problem with this whole process was that research. Several parents last time spoke about data points. There was all this presentation about, oh, we're taking away advanced math, and there was no data to back it up. Um, a bunch of us heard about Laguna Beach launched a similar effort and then repealed it within a year. So, since there are direct neighbors, that, that seems like it would be the first thing that would be presented when this proposal was, um, rolled out, and it was nowhere in the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint also made a bunch of claims that were unsubstantiated by any data or research. And I'm a researcher, so I would like to speak to going forward, transparency and research. And that's great that there's a study session August 22nd. I, I don't know if we'll be back in town, but there's no reason that the research can't be posted somewhere so that stakeholders can log on to a website or other forum and get that information. Um, I realize this is not the forum for my twenty-five questions that I still have, but, um, it would be great to have a forum for that before August 22nd, especially, I'm just gonna be blunt, for those of us who are now on waitlist for private schools as of last week. Which brings me to another point, and that is Honors English, which was already mentioned here. And I just found out through this math thing, I started calling my friends with kids in high school, asking them, what's going on? How does the math work? What should I be concerned with? And every single one of them with an advanced writer said they did not have a good experience in English as a ninth grader last year. Every single one I talked to was a ninth grader last year. And so that troubles me, just because I happen to have writers. I'm a writer by profession, so that's not surprising, but, um, I would ask that that be on the table as well, bringing back Honors English.
Thank you very much. I just want to correct something. The August 22nd date, was it twentieth or twenty-second? That isn't a study session, it's, it's an information night. Will parents be able to get, give input at that? Or is it just?
Yeah, we haven't designed it, but there's usually a Q and A at the end.
Okay.
And it is tentative, right?
Yeah.
It's tentative, so a study session would occur with the board, and it would be one way, it would be in, past September or October, or something like that, okay? Yeah. So you're not missing a whole bunch. Um, okay. Bob Parsick.
Good evening, Board. I'm Bob Parsick. I live at 2612 Wavecrest Drive and have a sixth grader going into seventh and a fourth going into fifth. I'll keep my comments short, I'm not gonna go through a lot of the items that the other parents have. I'm really here to, to figure out two things. One is, and I'm glad to hear there are dates being talked about, but when I was here before the board last, I really want this to be an interactive process. I want to have a dialogue. I don't want this stilted setup. And so, I would really like two things. I'd like to figure out when we can get an answer from you for a proposal for dates for study sessions. I'd like to see two study sessions at a minimum, with three to four members of the board. I'd like Mr. Drake to be there if at all possible. It would also be great to get any of the teachers who weighed in as part of the process for the last proposal. I think we need to hear, uh, from those voices, because as you've heard definitively, the other parents here are data-driven. We want information, and we don't want just opinions. So that's important. Number two, I think to address both the top cohorts and the bottom cohorts, I would like to propose something that some other parents have talked about, some type of curriculum oversight or advisory committee. This would not be just for math, but perhaps for English and for science, and that would be with both administrators and, and teachers and, and, and parents, to get stakeholder inputs, to make sure the process is transparent, to bait, to understand the studies and the data-based recommendations that are being made, and then also reaching out to additional experts. I mean, for example, we were with some, uh, faculty from UCI this weekend and found out that Greg Duncan is one of the most renowned K through twelve experts in the country, and he's here at UCI. Why can't we reach out to Greg and have him join us for one of the meetings? Because he's got lots of datas and study. So I'd like two study sessions to understand when dates we can get on the calendar, and can we evaluate either through those or, or alternatively, a committee to put together with different stakeholders to be able to look at the curriculum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and as I've said, it's, that is in the works, and the study sessions are public, and so everybody would be invited, including the whole board. It would also be recorded, so, um, we will work, we, we'll start working on next year's calendar. Keith? Rabbi, Ravi?
Raben.
Raben, of course.
Hi, Keith Raben, 617 Carnation, uh, live in Coronel Omar. I've got a rising fifth grader and a rising eighth grader. Good to see all of you this evening. Uh, hopefully you've all had a chance to review my letter. I'm not going to, to read it all for you tonight. Uh, a lot of it has been covered. Um, you know, my, my primary concern about this whole process has been the absolute lack of data and information provided. And before the study sessions, I would just like you guys to give us some of the information to use to make these decisions. And hopefully all of you have this information. If you don't, um, then that's a whole other problem that we need to address urgently. Uh, and the data that I want is all the information you're using to make the decision to put illustrative math in place, why it is the best one for us, which ones were, what was in the consideration set, and, and what criteria were used to pick the final result? And all of that detail, I want to understand it, and I think a lot of people here do as well. Um, I'd love a written report that summarizes all the available data you used on the proposal to eliminate enhanced math, uh, because the data is overwhelming, that grouping students' viability works. Uh, almost all of the best performing school districts in the world use it. Uh, so why we would get rid of it for math is, is beyond me, and a lot of other parents that have done even the most basic research find this out. And I really want to see this data, please. Um, I want to see data on the pilot classes that were run with the new math curriculum this year. I heard there was a couple pilot classes run, I believe. Uh, how did the students do? Was there a report written at the end of it? Why were the materials good? What worked, what didn't? How much training are teachers are going to be given over the course of the summer with the new curriculum that's coming out next year? How many hours they're getting? Who's giving the training? How are we doing it? Um, and how are we gonna follow students and evaluate whether the new curriculum is working or not working? What are we gonna do to decide whether or not this is actually, was a good decision or not over the course of the next four years? Um, you know, it's been a pretty frustrating process. I've asked each of you multiple times, Dr. Navarro, everyone on the board, to provide me with the data you're using to make the decision, and no one can seem to do it. And I don't understand why. Uh, this is a decision that affects my children. If there's some law that I'm unaware of that keeps you from giving me the data and the analysis you use to make a decision that's affecting all of our kids, please let me know. please let me know. If there's not, please provide it to us. And provide it to us before the next study session so we can review it and come prepared. Thanks.
Raben, Mr. Raben. I'm going to suggest that you get an appointment with Mr. Drake. He has all the data. We have had many meetings about how illustrative math was chosen and about the pilot program. And teachers have come and talked about how they evaluated it. So, I am going to suggest that you talk to him. He can give you all that information. It is completely transparent. It was a decision that was made by teachers and presented to us. And I'm gonna say the same thing with the change in the pathways. That was brought to us. We made a decision. It was not, it was brought to us for our input, and we made a decision to hold back. We do have data, but that's one of the reasons we made the decision to hold back is we felt that, and I'm sorry if I'm speaking for them. I felt that, my own personal, I felt that we needed, as well as Karen had spoken, Mrs. Yelsey had spoken up, we needed more buy-in from the community. We needed the community to understand why we were thinking of going down this path. But it was not a decision that was made and gone back on. It was brought to us for a decision. We were not prepared to make a decision on that at that point. We didn't have enough information. So, I'm sorry that you feel that you're not getting answered. I don't know how much, how many ways to answer this, but please make an appointment with Dr. Drake. I think he will answer all, many, and maybe all of your questions, okay? Thank you. Next speaker is Thomas Courtney. Oh, I was gonna say. I thought maybe you're using an alias to speak twice.
Hello, I'm Thomas Courtney, 1245 Surfline Way, Corona del Mar. And thank you for listening to the parents who had these concerns. Thank you for arranging study sessions. I still, I guess my biggest question is why, what was the problem that we were solving by getting rid of differentiation? And I don't know the answer to that. I'm looking forward to learning that. And I'm sure you all are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Leece.
Good evening. I'm the chairman, president, and members of the board. My name is Wendy Leece. Listening to the parents and being at some of the school board meetings for the last year or so, it appears that there may, in the interest of public engagement, parents want to be more involved. And I have a couple of suggestions. One gentleman commented that he lost that minute. And so, in, according to your board bylaw number 9322, I'm gonna ask that as a member of the public, which I'm allowed to do, to place on the agenda a review of your public comment policy. I think to arbitrarily decide that you're gonna cut everybody's three minutes down to two is unfair, according to the First Amendment, which guarantees freedom of speech, and also according to the Ralph M. Brown Act, which allows and wants the public to be engaged in these types of discussions regarding schools and how our money is being spent. I think you need to, instead of having such a closed system that is unfriendly and confusing to parents and on how to fill out a card, for example, last time I filled out five cards, because I wanted to speak on the safety report, I wanted to speak on the math report, I wanted to speak on public comments, I wanted to speak on the budget, and I wanted to speak on LCAP. However, I was denied speaking on the safety and the math. I did speak on public comments, but I sat here by myself and was totally passed over when I filled out a card to speak on the budget, as your directions say in your agenda, to fill out a card. Well, I just sat there silently, and finally, on the next item on the LCAP, I had to speak up and say, "Point of order, point of order. I filled out a card." So, your system needs to be reexamined as far as equity for the public. It's confusing. Can you speak on a report? Can you speak on an information item? According to the Ralph M. Brown Act, I believe you can. And in my application, I'll submit to the superintendent. Maybe your attorney needs to look at that section, which talks about any item that's agendized, including reports, including information, gives us another three minutes to speak. That's why, one of the reasons I believe parents are frustrated. You only gave them two minutes to cram everything in that they wanted to say, and they only had one chance to do it. So, I'll fill out the application, and I'd like to see this on an agenda in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro.
Thank you. You know, I think it's important to go back and look at the timeline. This is not, these events aren't just arrived to overnight. This selection process was in the works for two years. And I think it was a good, it was a good recommendation that one of the speakers meet with Mr. Drake, because he could provide him with all the background information. I was not privy to the data, as I don't sit on the steering committee. It's basically driven by our teachers. As you know, we have a very transparent, open selection process where it's led by teachers. And what's, what I find to be most inspiring about this is it's not just middle school teachers working. It's middle school and elementary and high school teachers working together to put together a comprehensive K-12 math program. And they're very dedicated professionals. They're experts in their field. We trust that, you know, that they come up to, they come up to us with the best recommendations that they can possibly identify after a long exhaustive process where they've looked at everything. And there are standards that they measure everything against. And it's important to recognize that the curriculum isn't changing. The curriculum has been the same since 2013, when the new standards were adopted. We have the state curriculum. Nothing's changing. What's only changing are the instructional support materials that we're using. So, what our teachers do is try to find the best materials that match what's required in those standards. And they do that diligently and with a great eye for detail, along with all the research on what's the best way to deliver instructional services to kids. And so, it was a development that came later on in the process. And I think one of the lessons the staff has learned is that we need to maybe address these things earlier if there are, it's like, you know, you see a little weed growing in your garden. You can wait till it gets really big, or you can pick it earlier and figure out what you're doing. So, not that this was a weed, no idea. It's not. It's just an analogy that says, when you see something, we better, we better look at it a little more closely and have a few more discussions. And so, that's what we tend to do. But, you know, I feel, I feel confident that our steering committee and our teachers were extremely professional, extremely diligent, and judicious in their selection process. And they gave everything a real thorough analysis before coming to the determination of what the best support materials are to support the standards that we inherited or that we were charged with in 2013. So, the curriculum's not changing. The standards aren't changing. We are just trying to find, or we are finding the materials that work best for us and will work best for our students. And that's the charge. And it's about all kids. It's not just about, about kids who struggle. We have, we have intervention programs throughout the district from kindergarten through 12th grade for kids who struggle. But we also have, when you get into AP classes, we all know the famous study sessions that go on that are above and beyond what happens in the classroom. So, there's a lot of intervention for students who are hoping to, one of their goals is to achieve as many AP courses as they can throughout their high school career. So, there's a lot of support in those areas. But I will, I will recommend that parents do keep in touch, that they go to our math nights. We're gonna have math nights at our schools throughout the year. And pretty soon, at the direction of the board, we'll also be introducing parent learning walks so that they can see what's going on in the classroom as well. Now, it can't be a lot of parents. It's a small number of parents, you know, any of them from 7 to 10. But our teachers do this, and they do a great job. And we get to see what students are doing in the classroom, and that's always really important. So, I'm, I'm excited about, about having our teams share a little more about their process. But it's a very challenging, rigorous process, and they put in a lot of extra hours that they didn't get really paid for to do this exceptional work.
Thank you. Also, the process was written up, oh, I'm sorry. The process was written up in, at source?
Ed Works.
Ed Reports. If, I don't know how you can, how our audience members could look it up, but it was
Nationally recognized.
Nationally recognized as a good process for exactly what we were going through, trying to evaluate materials and come to consensus, not just voting, but consensus on what was best for all kids. Mrs. Matoye.
And also, our study session that we had on the new math materials was when we were told that there was a new math pathway. So, I, it was, and I'm, point of order, I'm double checking. Study sessions are, fall under Ralph M. Brown, correct? So, oftentimes, they're more than three days' notice. Sometimes, if something gets done quickly, which this one did, it was trying to get everybody before the teachers left for the end of the year, it may not have had more than three days' notice to the public that we were having a study session. But I know several of us on the board tried to get the message out via social media. And our own NMUSD app also gets all those news items out. So, if, in order to anticipate future study sessions as soon as we get, find out about them, just check that little news item on the board main page, on the homepage, or on the app. Because that way, if there's a topic that's being discussed at the study session level, you can be aware of it. Now, be advised, we often are considerate of our teachers and don't have them at night, because the teachers are here during the daytime. So, they may be in the late afternoon. And it's not to be exclusive. It's to be understanding so that our teachers, who are involved in these study sessions, aren't here till all hours of night, because they're teaching during that time period. So, it's a, it's not a perfect system. We can always work to make it better. So.
Mrs. Flore.
Yes, a couple of things. Dr. Navarro, Mr. Boyd mentioned the students having to take an additional class. I would really like to have a conversation about that, because there are two schools in this district that are not afforded the same opportunities that two of other schools. Currently, Enson and T-Winkle function on a standard schedule, so they get to take six classes a day. And Corona del Mar and Costa Mesa High School are on block scheduling. And so, those 7th and 8th graders get to take eight classes. In other words, they get to take up to three electives. And so, while they are, may in fact have an intervention class, they are not giving up their electives. Whereas, students at T-Winkle and at Enson give up an elective to take an intervention class or any other thing. So, I would really encourage us. I know that it's a requirement that has to be go through the teachers' union. But again, I think that we have, we have two schools that we are shortchanging the students, and they don't get the ability, they don't get the additional electives and abilities, opportunities that two of other schools have. And so, my granddaughter is at Corona del Mar and had the opportunity to take art, drama, and a language, all within the bell schedule as well as another elective. So, it was a marvelous program, and we selected that school specifically so that she didn't have to take those classes after school, so she could spend time with her family and do the activities after school. Whereas, if she had gone to Enson, everything would have been after school. So, I would like to have that. The second thing I would like to address is, and I will be requesting this because Mr., it's a Raben? Raben. I will request that perhaps items 14B17, item 14B18, and item 14B19 be placed on discussion so that Mr. Drake can explain the fact, because these are three proposals that he would like to know about, with turning, in terms of the training that's going to be happening. And we are going to be approving three contracts for professional development. So, perhaps we can, when I go to the consent counter, we can remove those three items. And so, Mr. Drake can do a little bit of in-depth and what's gonna happen with those three things to answer that question.
17, 18, and 19.
17, 18, and 19, 14B, 14B. They're the three, they're the three professional developments for our math programs. The math programs. So, okay. So, thank you.
Okay. So, on to consent calendar.
And that's where I would like to just make a comment before we vote on it, on 14B14.
And I have one on, where is it? Let's see, it's the
Tell me what it is.
It's the Sonora and the City of Newport Beach. I had it written down here. Just wanted to make a comment. Can't find it now.
You can address it in your personal comments.
Yes, that's fine. Okay.
Absolutely. President Stell, could we take a five-minute break? So, people can leave. Oh, sure.
Sure. Okay. We're gonna take a, it's been requested we take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 7:40.
Oh, here it is. I'll skip, I won't say anything about 14B7. The only hangout there, the City of Newport Beach that's supporting the Costa Mesa school. How dare they.
Okay.
So many kids.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back. Yes, that would be good. She's gonna shut the door.
$120 per kid.
Okay, gotta read this.
Okay. So, we're calling the meeting back to order at 7:45. And we're up to consent calendar, and Mrs. Flore has taken
All items listed under the consent counter are considered by the board to be routine and will be acted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent counter for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar. And I had recommended, but I don't see the parent heads left. So, you know, I will do it just because I said I was going to. But, you know, it's, personal comment, it's very frustrating when they ask these questions about transparency. We try and bring them the information of transparency, and they disappear, and they leave the meeting. So. But the interest of transparency, I will ask to have 14B17, 14B18, and 14B19 removed so that Mr. John Drake can explain a little bit more about that.
Okay.
And I would just like, I would like to make a comment on 14B14 before we vote.
Sure.
14B14, it says, "Accept a grant from the City of Costa Mesa for playground improvements and purchase of musical instruments for Newport Mesa Unified School District Elementary Schools." I would just like to thank the City of Costa Mesa for generously donating that money to our school to our school district. And this, it is usually a secondary grant and this is the first time it's been earmarked for elementary schools. And we're excited about getting new backdrop, backstops and board, backboards and nets for our playgrounds. And, 92? 92 of them and to get more musical instruments to augment the summer music program. It's just a wonderful program. And I look forward to being able to submit grants to the city in the future. But this is just fabulous. So thank you, City of Costa Mesa.
Here, here. Thank you. And I, it would be nice to, maybe we already have this somewhere, just a list of, to know exactly what was purchased with this grant money. I'm sure, I know you have.
92 backboards and nets and musical
At what, I know it was
All element, all the elementary schools in Costa Mesa, 92 of them, slurry. And then there's the musical instruments are all listed down there.
We have that, we can send it all to you.
Thank you very much. I've asked, somebody's asked for that, so. Okay, so we need a motion.
There, I see it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Flore and seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to public hearing. This is a public hearing disclosing the provisions of 2018-19 tentative collective bargaining agreement with the California School Employees Association, chapter number 18. Do you want to speak to this, Mr. Trader?
This is a disclosure in accordance with AB 1200 and government code where the district is disclosing the cost of a, of our, an agreement, our tentative agreement with a bargaining unit, in this case, our CSEA bargaining unit. And the cost of this is, is fairly minimal, it's $4,907. And in accordance also with that, we've substantiated the district's means to cover the cost of that agreement.
Okay, so I'm going to do the public hearing first. So I'm opening the public hearing. Okay, and I'm closing the public hearing. And going on to 16, Discussion Action Calendar, which is 16A, approved the tentative agreement between NMUSD and California School Employees Chap, Association, Chapter 18. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. We're very excited tonight to bring forward to you the tentative agreement with CSEA. We had four negotiating sessions that went very well. The highlights of the tentative agreement are settling on the health and welfare benefits for the coming year to continue them at the current rate. The district has agreed to absorb $7 per employee to maintain that rate. We've also added clarifying language in the leaves under bereavement, which you will see. And I do want to remind the board that as a part of last year's negotiation, 1718, there was already a 2.5% salary increase for this coming year, which was approved in September of 2017. So we had excellent discussions around training as well and we've made some commitments to further those conversations throughout the year, touching base with the president of CSEA. And so we're looking forward to working with him in that area. So tonight, we bring forward for your approval, TA.
Move approval of the memorandum of standing between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and California School Employees Association, Chapter 18.
Second. Okay. So I don't think I'll repeat it for a fourth time. It is moved by Mrs. Flore, seconded by Mrs. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful. Okay, moving on to 16B, approve management confidential and supervisor 2018-19 compensation and benefits.
Move approval of management confidential and supervisor 2018-19 compensation and benefits.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Olson.
Yes, we do bring it forward for, for your approval tonight. Management confidential and supervisory employees are unrepresentative, but we do meet and confer to settle what their compensation will be. So what you see in front of you is the, as with CSEA, the employee benefit commitment that we've made to continue it at the, at the rates that we currently have with, and absorb the increased cost.
Okay, so we have it moved by Mrs. Flore and seconded by Mrs. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, who carries? 16C, this is Adopt Resolution 1718 of the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District, acting as the legislative body of Community Facilities District Number 90-1 of the Newport Mesa Unified School District, relative to the levy of special taxes within Community Facilities District 90-1. Mr. Trader? There you go.
There's not much more I can add to that in the, this is simply, you are the legislative body that's going to levy the taxes for Community Facilities District 90-1 and you're required to do this once a year. And so this act here, resolution, provides that authority to levy those taxes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Snell, I would like to have some clarification on this. I will vote for this, but with my understanding, because I asked this question a couple of years ago and they said that this did not exist anymore and that there were only two people that were on the legislative body and that was Dr. Paul Reed and Jeff Trader. And so I'm a little confused on exactly, because I asked the same question about 90, you know, this facility's, this is the CFD and we used to have separate, a separate meeting of this, we had to have a separate actual, separate meeting of it because that was part of it. And then I was told, no, that doesn't exist anymore. And I, so, just, in the, I'd just like to have it clarified, exactly what are we talking about here? Because my understanding is, this is now back on here again.
Okay, I think we need a clarification.
So, we don't have to do it now.
We'll provide that to you.
Yeah, I mean, before we vote on it, we should probably get a clarification.
I think so.
Well, part of our issue is we have to provide these rates to the auditor controller by August 10th.
And we will have a meeting before that.
No, that's fine then. It's just that, what is it? Do, are we, do we not, do we have, we have the CFD, but is there, are we, this is calling us the legislative body.
And you are.
We are. It's not sunsetting.
Yeah, but we were told that it was, never mind.
I think we were, I think that got, that's another Community Facilities District issue that we got, we're kind of getting crossed here. And so I'll provide you with that clarification.
That would be really good news if it was no longer needed. That means we would have painted it off a long time ago.
Well, this one, this one will sunset here in the next few years. It's coming to an end.
It's coming really close. Okay. I have a, I have a, it was motion by Ms. Matoye and I, I don't think, I didn't hear the second.
Second.
By Mrs. Flore. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's a roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flore?
Yes.
Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
And Ms. Yelzey's absent.
Okay. 16D.
Move approval of the Agreement for Employment of Assistant Superintendent and Chief Human Resources Officer between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Ms. Leona Olson. That's you? Dated July 10, 2018.
Second.
Yes, I, yes, you will have to read that, but I would like to tell you that Ms. Olson stepped into a situation where she's actually been doing two jobs over the last year and has done so without allowing anything to drop. It's incredible, her work ethic.
Accept your sleep.
Her incredible work ethic. And I have to tell you that she was supported greatly by Mrs. Clark, the director of Classified. Together, they were carrying this load and did an incredible job. And as you've heard, as you, as you've witnessed, thorough, complete information is provided to you on all the issues of importance. So it's with an honor, with great honor that I recommend her to you.
Great. Well, I, I, the interaction I've had has just been since you've filled in for this and you do a wonderful job of explaining complicated, detailed information to me and the rest of the board. And, and I'm really pleased for this promotion. This is great. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything.
Can we say the same thing?
Okay, so, do I have to read this out?
Yes, you do. After, after the motion is made.
Okay, I need a motion.
I did.
I did and I seconded.
Oh, sorry. I should just put down because you're doing all of these. Give someone else a chance down there. Okay.
No, we, it's okay, you know, they're running the board, it's okay.
Okay, so I read all of this.
Yes.
Leona, so Leona Olson is being promoted to Assistant Superintendent, Chief Human Resources Officer.
22, 224 days of service.
24 days of service. Her term is July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. Her salary is $234,289. She has a transportation allowance of $650 per month and a communication allowance of $100 per month. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, so, welcome aboard.
Keep doing what you're doing.
Don't stop.
Oh, are you waiting?
Yeah, well, she likes to read, one of you guys like to read. Yeah.
Move, let's see, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for Employment of Executive Director Elementary Education between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Dr. Kurt Sir, dated July 10, 2018.
Okay, so, Dr. Navarro.
Yes, and I'd like to really cover the, all three of the ones that you'll be voting on next because the reason that being brought to you is not because there's a change in salary or a change in terms, it's really because we've added a clause that was required, that wasn't in the, in contracts before and we've added them to all of the contracted employees. So this brings it up, all these three contracts up to date on the clauses that are required. Pardon me?
Is that a super-secret clause?
No, it's not a super-secret clause. The board has the authority to buy out a contract or it has the authority to use a reason of cause, dismiss an employee for cause. And so we just wanted to make sure that those two were covered in everybody's contract so it's above board and not confusing when cause is brought up. You're still allowed to, by ed code, go, to go by cause even if it's not explicitly in the contract, but this just makes it very clear. So this is just not changing any of their terms of their salary or any of their compensation or their year. It's just making clear what the, what the reasons for release can be.
And ed code now says that when we do any change at all, we have to read everything out.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and that's for the, all three of these next ones.
Right.
If you don't, I will repeat it again two other times if you'd like, but
No, that's okay. Once was good.
Okay, so 16E, which has been moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Black for Kurt Sir, Dr. Kurt Sir, who is the executive director, 224 days. His term is July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. His salary is $218,473. Transportation allowance, $650 per month. Communication allowance, $100 per month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for coming in despite your injury. Poor thing.
Go home and heal.
Yeah. 16F, approve First Amendment to the Agreement for Employment of Executive Director Secondary Education between the Board of Education of Newport Mesa Unified School District and Dr. Kurt Baurmeister.
So moved.
So it has been moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Flore. And Dr. Navarro's already spoke to it. Kirk Baurmeister is, Dr. Kirk Baurmeister, another doctor in the house, executive director, 224 days, July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. Salary, $218,473. Transportation allowance, $650 per month. Communication allowance, $100 per month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. 16G, approve amendment to Agreement for Employment of Communications and Public Relations Officer between the Board of Education of the Newport Mesa Unified School District and Annette Franco.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, do you want to speak to this? That was the same.
This is the same. I do want to also point out that all of these contracts were updated to take out the $500 compensation for a physical since we now have our healthcare that covers that.
Okay. Okay, so Annette Franco is Communication and Public Relations Officer, 224 days a year, July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021. Salary, $146,042. This figure reflects the step and column change approved August 22, 2017. Transportation allowance, $650 per month. Communication allowance, $100 per month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that also passes.
Now, you have 14B-17.
Yeah, I have some items moved to the consent calendar, I mean, the action calendar. And that, the first one is 14B-17. Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Drake?
Sure.
May I recommend that we take them, all three, at the same time? Okay, and then Mr. Drake can just go through all of them at once?
Go through all three at once. So first, thank you for the opportunity to share this with you because it's extremely exciting and I want to take you back, I think, to maybe one of the first times I reported a year and a half or two years ago on our process and I said, "It's going to take a long time." And just to remind people that we are really in the early stages of transforming math instruction in our classrooms. And these types of professional developments is, are the direction we're going. And again, it's, it's based off of what is the most sound practice, which is job-embedded professional development within the workday of teachers, within the practice of what they're doing from day to day in their classrooms and on their sites. And that's what a majority of this professional development that I'm, I'm going to present to you is about. 17, B-17 is actually in relation to our Moonlight Series, which this year, part of our processes, or part of our focus for the Moonlight Series will be fluency. And fluency, again, has changed in relation to what it is. It no longer is at timed tests and kids, you know, being able to just memorize facts, but it's back to them actually understanding what it means to multiply and understanding what it means to divide and being able to do that flexibly, flexibly, accurately, with efficiency. And so it's beyond just timed tests and memorization. And so our Moonlight Series will focus on providing teachers that, those strategies that are also embedded within and where fluency is taught within our program of bridges. So once again, it's all job-embedded. The other part that we're tying into this Moonlight Series is if you recall, this year, we started a group of, of math teacher leads. These leads with Val Henry, who's a fluency expert out of UCI, has done a lot of research and is actually, a lot of our standards are based on some of her research. She's going to be working with our leads around these ideas of fluency and what it looks like both within bridges as well as how to impart that knowledge or that, that working with kids. So our lead teachers will be receiving two days of training prior, or a day of training prior to the upcoming Moonlight Series and then those lead teachers will be facilitating groups with Val Henry in our Moonlight Series. And that's what this B-17 is about. B-18, again, if you kind of go back to big picture, our three-year plan, first year is exploring and learning when we, when we adopt new materials. Second year is revising and clarifying and then third year, fourth year, fifth year and clarifying. And then, third year, fourth year, fifth year is just refining and refining and refining. So, going into K-5 math, we're in year two of bridges, so we're in that re, you know, revising and clarifying stage. And we have two absolute nationally known experts at OCDE that are math, that are math coordinators at OCDE. And the two B, or eighteen and nineteen are both 120-day contracts or proposals with these two experts to come in, again, job embedded work. We'll do rotations at sites at grade levels where they'll be working with sites. So, the, for K-5, it'll be within bridges, making sure that everything being taught is at grade level because, believe it or not, there are some things that are off-grade level in some of these materials. And we've got to make sure that we're addressing those pieces, but also building content knowledge with teachers within the instructional practice that they're doing. So, it'll be groups of teachers working with this expert, planning instruction, delivering instruction, observing, providing feedback, adjusting, kind of on that lesson study model. That's what will be happening for 120 days this year in kindergarten through fifth grade. So, that job embedded work, not pulling teachers out, you know, to provide them a skill to go back or a strategy to go back and try, but actually doing it with problems of practice in the classroom on a regular basis. Nineteen gets into our secondary support. So, if you think about it, six through eight is in first year implementation. So, it's going to be exploring and learning, but the consistent message we heard from community and honestly from the board as well as from teachers in relation to the proposed pathway changes we were thinking of making is that teachers need training and need support in relation to differentiation. This type of job embedded support will support that. The consultant that we're bringing in, the coordinator from OCDE, is an illustrative math trainer. So, there's nobody in Orange County that knows these materials better and how they work in relation to meeting every kid's need in a heterogeneous classroom or in a homogeneous classroom with these materials, based off of making sure that teachers are constantly evaluating the student thinking that's going on around math and on making sense of that and then giving them the freedom to discover, you know, within the parameters of the lesson. Again, it's 120 days of job embedded support of the implementation of illustrative math materials. This person will also be supporting our illustrative math pilot in high school. So, some of these days, not many of them, but some of these days will be to work specifically in that job embedded model with the high school teachers in utilizing and getting to know in how to effectively use illustrative math materials for high school as well. So, again, it's, it's, it sounds like a lot as far as 120 days. And it sounds like a lot of money, but the reality of it is, if you put 240 days up to our teacher salary schedule, it's a pretty good deal that we're getting with them, along with the fact that it addresses some of the, the old issues of having to get 60 subs on any given day. We can now break that down to six or seven. And it's in, it's within the work that they have to do in planning and delivering instruction and supporting that. The other, the other outcome of this is that teachers start discovering some problems of practice that they can address in a, in a really supportive, non-threatening way. So, that's, that's what all of these pieces are that are in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
The teacher, the teacher input that I've received is they are very grateful for this model of professional development. It's really nice to have your kids and the materials you're using and someone that comes in and says, "This is how it would look." They'll, sometimes they'll model, sometimes they'll watch, and it's just, it's a real good learning model as opposed to sit and listen and then go back and try to take it back. Very effective. I'm glad you've selected these.
Need to approve fourteen B-17, fourteen B-18, and fourteen B-19.
Second.
Second. I'm a job. Do I, sure, do I need to repeat all three of these?
Just the numbers.
It's good enough. Okay. Okay, so, fourteen B-17, fourteen B-18, fourteen B-19, moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Ms. Matoye?
Franco.
Mrs. Franco.
And I have my letter.
Oh, okay. Do you want to speak to this before we take?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple, just a couple of, how are the TOSSAs going to be used? And did we just, I believe we just also, I'm asked Martha Rankin, she's going to be taking on a TOSSA position in the, at the elementary level of math? Does she have math? Is she, she's a math?
Not, not math, I know that.
Well, I saw a TOSSA.
I saw a TOSSA.
We just.
Yes, so she has been recommended for one of our language arts.
She was on the consent counter.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
So, it's real now.
She has been recommended to work, you know, as a language arts TOSSA.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
ELA TOSSA, one of our Title I ELA TOSSAs.
Okay. But so, how are the, how are the, how are the math TOSSAs going to be in effect? Because we only have two of them at the secondary level?
So, we do. We have two secondary TOSSAs. So, they're both, well, the high school level, Caroline Carl will be part of the pilot. And obviously, Stephanie Marvickson is at the middle school, so she will be implementing new materials. Their classrooms, so they, they basically work one day on, one day off at their sites for the most part. So, their classrooms will become labs when students are not in there. And that's where grade level teams will meet, not just from their schools, but from the surrounding zones to do this job embedded work. So that, and then, obviously, they will be part of both receiving the training and supporting the implementation and the pilot of, of the programs.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. So, it is moved. It is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And thank you for repeating that again for all of us. Yeah. Okay, board member reports. We're going to start with Mrs. Black. No report. No report.
No report.
Nothing.
What? And I only have one thing and I wanted to thank, again, I want to thank the City of Costa Mesa Manager's Office, City Manager's Office and Dr. Navarro for trying to work out a solution to the Orange County Fair access from the Mesa Del Mar community. It was an unintended situation that came up. That's, that's, in order to keep the site safe and to keep the contractor's liability intact, it was something that we didn't foresee far enough to do it really fast.
You'll have to keep us apprised because we have no, I have no idea.
Okay, there's a, there's a gate at Presidio, the Presidio parking lot where crop is held. One end of it is at T-Wink, is at Davis School and the other end is at T-Winkle Park. Okay, just the parking lot roughly, that's where it is. And the gate that goes to the community that's by the end of, by Davis is typically open all summer long. And the parents of the Mesa Del Mar community can go through and access the Orange County Fairground. Due to the construction, we've locked the gate to keep the liability and to keep everybody safe. And until one of the community members notified me, "Oh, my gosh, what are we going to do?" I called up and we, Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Navarro, Dr. Navarro, and we worked together and with the city manager and discovered that the other end of the parking lot, there's a gate that goes through T-Winkle Park right by the ball fields.
Yeah, it's not on Presidio, it's not on a Presidio site. There's no, there's no fronts there.
But it's roughly, in my brain, it's roughly, this is on this end of it and this is on the other end of it. But there is a gate right there by the ball fields and they're going to keep that open later than normal and keep it open so that the community can access the fair through that gate. Not the perfect ideal for those people that accessed it with their golf carts because they parked on our property. But this summer, we can't do that because of the liability of the contractor. But the fact that everybody stepped up as quickly as they did, I wanted to thank the city and thank everyone and, or Mr. Holcomb when I called up and said, "Ah, what's this supposed to be?" So, thank you.
Okay, I just want to do a shout out to all the boosters in the Costa Mesa schools who, who did all the fireworks booths that were everywhere. I had the opportunity to work and, as I do every year. And some of those parents, they are, they have to stay overnight to guard the fireworks. So.
It's just not Newport, it's just not Costa Mesa.
It's Newport Beach.
There's Newport schools too that are on 17th Street.
Yeah.
But, but they're all in our city.
Yeah, they, yeah, because it's illegal to sell.
But it's boosters.
Yeah. But, oh, that, so, anyway, all the, all the boosters are trying, they're trying to raise money for their teams. And, and so, they're like super volunteers. Whether you agree with fireworks or not, at least they're safe and sane. So, so that's good. And I just, I want to welcome Dr. Sur back. We've missed you and wish you full recovery. We'll be thinking of you tomorrow. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay.
No more vacations for you.
You don't have committee reports?
Oh, any committee reports?
No, I'll be sending you a list of all of the classes that are being offered.
Oh, I'd like that.
Through Coastline RP. We're still working on, there's supposed to be a, a steering committee meeting with Newport Mesa's College and Career so that we'll be identifying what the principals would like. But again, our students are at a disadvantage. We approved the calendar and our, our school, our classes will be starting quite a bit later than all the other schools. So, registration for any of our off-campus classes that our students participate in caused some major difficulties because they won't be able to participate in those.
And some of our kids that even though we don't start school until after Labor Day, some of their classes start two to three weeks early in other districts.
Yes, exactly.
For the crop classes, so they have to come back.
Exactly. So, they have to come back. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Same thing with Orange Coast College Summer School. I found out they had, Orange Coast College had to come up with an extra session for one or two courses because none of the incoming freshmen into Orange Coast College could access it if they're coming from Newport Mesa because we're not done yet. So, I thought that was interesting too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that till this year.
Okay, Dr. Navarro.
First, I just want to thank the board for being involved in analysis of data and thank the Ed Division for leading those conversations. I think that some of the information that you received just recently, just a few minutes ago from Mr. Drake, is the result of those conversations that you're participating in with staff and with principals regarding data. And I know that you've all reached out to make sure that you understand what steps are being taken to support the, the introduction of these new instructional materials. I do want to tell you that Mrs. Black went an extra mile and actually scheduled time with Mr. Drake to talk about it in person about what was going on. So, thank you.
And Mr. Trader.
And Mr. Trader.
See, I know who to bring the money guy.
Yes.
To make sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, just your involvement's really, really appreciated. I don't think people recognize or see everything that happens on a day-to-day basis behind the scenes and all the work that you do to really get to the, to the, what the nitty-gritty is going on and how you can support it and guide it as well. And I do want to tell you, I think, you know, you know, while our team moved a little quickly on this last recommendation in math, I'm very, very proud of the fact that we have a very collaborative process that was initiated three years ago, or maybe four years. I don't remember. I'm starting to lose track of the, two, three years ago, when you asked that our, that everybody get their fingerprints on, on these types of decisions. And I'm really, really pleased that the Ed Division, under the leadership of all the directors and Russell Lee Sung, have really, really made that process effective. And to be written up by a group like Ed Reports is really quite significant in our field. So, you know, and I don't know if Mrs. Flor will remember, or Mrs. Black, or Mrs. Franco, but one of my goals was to create a collaborative environment and to take the fear away. And so, I feel like we're starting to get there that our principals can tell us what we need to hear, that our directors, they always hear from me, "What do I need to hear that you're afraid to tell me?" Because that, only when can we be honest, can we really be one's professional friend to be direct and share what, you know, what, what might, we might not be comfortable. So, and I'm hoping that our site leaders start using that example at their sites more and that the way they're treated at the district is how we want all employees to be treated at our sites and that decisions are open for debate and that all perspectives are welcome and that the dissenting perspective is the most important because it points out things maybe you didn't think about as you come together with a decision that can be reached on consensus.
And I would like to think that everyone that comes before the board can equally feel as confident to be, have, let us know of dissenting opinions or ideas that we haven't had. That's something I've said since, one of the things I've said all along is that nothing happens without a speed bump and we can't fix anything if we don't know where the struggles are. So.
Absolutely. And sometimes I am their voice in that respect.
You are. You're the bump.
I'm the bump.
Speed bump.
I would like to take a moment to, to say something tonight. I'm honored that I have your confidence, the boards as well as the superintendents, to continue in this capacity. I truly enjoy the work of HR. I enjoy the collaboration with the other divisions. And I think in my short tenure with the district, we've really seen growth in that area of not working so much in compartments, but working collectively together. And it, it's been a great experience. I, I do want to share with you that the HR staff, and I know Dr. Navarro acknowledged Kristen Clark for her fine work and hard work and absolutely, and the, the rest of the staff as well within the department are truly dedicated to supporting our employees and the board's priorities. They, they are just committed to that work. So, I feel very privileged and honored to, and excited to continue. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, we have to replace you. We're on. We're on.
No report.
Okay.
We're busy closing the books on seventeen eighteen. And with Mrs. Flor's encouragement, we look forward to bringing an update on our actual financial performance for seventeen eighteen bumped up against the governor's real adopted budget for eighteen nineteen.
Yeah, exactly.
In early September.
And thank you for clarifying. I sent an email to Mr. Trader and asked him, because when the governor's budget came out, I said, "So, what money of this do we get?" And he went item by item and let me know that of all those great things, we get a little bit of it, but it looks good for the state. But we actually can maybe touch a little tiny bit of it.
We're getting about a million from CTIG, right?
Yes.
From the career and technical.
That's true.
Yeah, we'll get some. We'll get some, but just not, I just was curious and I want to thank you. You took a time and it was a very thorough report.
You're welcome.
Well, even though it's summer, you know, our secondary schools are very busy. All the schools have a full slate of summer athletics. Our summer remedial program at Back Bay began this week. Our online health classes began, our Math 1 and Math 2 classes, and our EL classes are all underway. So, we have a lot of kids in seats and a lot of kids out running around on fields and courts all over the district.
Good. Good place for it.
Along the same lines, as far as elementary summer school, it kind of back to what Dr. Navarro was saying, talk about a truly collaborative process in getting the summer engineering and music up and running. It, it really is. And what happens for those kids is amazing. We have about 450 kids in the engineering and over 200 in the music program. And every site is represented, which is also a piece of the puzzle of collaboration. Transportation's provided. Food services is provided. And then, obviously, we do a lot of work with MNO at the beginning of all of this planning, saying, "Stay away from Ray for as long as you can this summer as far as maintenance operations." So, they'll have a task, you know, when this is over to kind of speed some things up to get Ray ready for the fall. But it's really an amazing process. There are some people behind the scenes that never get the credit that they deserve. Stacy DeBoome Howard spends countless hours getting this up and running with the help of Janet Hernandez and Claire Warner, who are on-site at the beginning, you know, directing buses, watching kids, you know, doing everything needed on that day. But it's up and running. I've heard nothing but positive things about it. And so, we're really proud of that. As far as teacher training, that's coming fast and furious. We actually start cognitive guided instruction tomorrow for mathematics with our three through five teachers. We also have three principals participating in that. And then, towards the end of the month, we'll, our Title I fraction lab, which is going to be that job embedded lab setting for both teacher development and student development. We know that fraction knowledge is one of those pieces that if the kids don't get that by third grade, the likelihood of them getting through Algebra II is going to be difficult. So, that's going to be a really neat experience over at Sonora with about 14 of our teachers and 30 of our Title I kids. So, if you've got some time, I'll send you those dates. That would be fun for you to, to step in and see how that's working at the end of the, end of this month. And then, we will also be training 23 new math fellows for elementary education. They will go through the CGI training and then meet for two hours after school each month, receiving some additional support throughout the year.
Great. Okay. Okay, anybody else?